Call the August meeting to order, please. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with roll call. Mr. Costello?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Spence?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Major?
Here.
And Mr. Drew?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. I'll just want to start by saying that if anyone has any comments, that we ask that you please stand up and state your name. If you have a longer comment or a presentation, we ask that you would stand at the podium so that everyone on the live feed and the video can also hear. And since masks are not mandatory, we ask that you please try to speak up so that everyone can hear you. First item is approval of minutes. Does anyone have any corrections that need to be made?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 13th Vermillion County Council meeting minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Donovan to approve the July minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Minutes are approved. Next, we have the treasures report. Are there any questions, concerns? Lauren does here if we have any questions. She also dropped off the trust Indiana accounts and the amount of interest. Okay. Please note that we've received all the treasures reports. Next is the comp time report. Any questions, concerns on it? All right. Moving on, we will go to the reporting only requests for transfer funds. The first reporting only is for $1,500. Circuit Court is moving $1,500 from equipment and maintenance, to equipment and maintenance from conference and legal seminars. Any questions? Next reporting is salary change moving to overtime. It's for the Sheriff's Department. The next reporting we have is $2,000 transfer. It's coming from photography to the sheriff's evidence tech to pay the evidence tech for the remainder of the year. Again, it's the Sheriff's Department. Next reporting only, $50 transfer rebuilding a structure to copy machine maintenance. All right. And our last reporting only is $2,000 so they can purchase face masks for the courthouse. They're just transferring accounts. Any questions there? We'll move on. The first item in your packet is the jail project, but I'd like to move that to the end. We have a presentation from Dr. Jerry Hawkins also about the jail, so I'd like to combine those two together so that all the jail information is in one section of our meeting. So if we can go ahead and do the other additional appropriations first. We have a $1,000 additional appropriation from the EOC. It is money they have received from a grant from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. The grant has been fully executed and they're ready to pay their contractor, so they just need our approval to spend their grant funds.
I'd like to make a motion for additional appropriation of $1,000. I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Spence to allow the transfer or the $1,000 appropriation. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. All right. And next is an additional appropriation coming out of the public safety funds for a body scanner. They're requesting $10,000. However, there are some options. Is there?
Yeah. Yeah. I think around $8,400 or more than that. We didn't have a particular budget yet. But something like that.
So, okay. They presented at the Commissioners' Meeting for $8,400, the scanner they're looking at?
Yeah. It was very major, but you had to try and cover it for them.
Okay. What type of scanner did they decide on? Because there were different ones in our packet where it was a thermal imaging and then a metal detector and a thermal lens.
Yeah, that was that one. It was totally detailed. You had a temperature sensor and then you had a pop and eye for what you were talking about.
Actually, I believe it was the one with the metal detector and body screen. I believe Mr. Hannes was supposed to be here tonight, but I spoke to him. Oh, is he? Yeah, he told me earlier today that Amy, I think this could be reimbursed back through...
If you get the thermal part.
If you get the thermal part, it can be reimbursed.
If you could justify it. CARES grant?
Yeah.
CARES Act money.
Who would be in charge of filing that with the CARES?
Mark Mahers.
Mark Mahers, right? Okay.
I've talked to Chad about it, and I think it's a good thing for the courthouse, so I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Spence, a second by Mr. Donovan. Is there any further questions? All those in favor of approving the $10,000, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The next additional appropriation is for, to add longevity pay to the handbook. The Vermillion County Commissioners have approved this based, if dependent upon our funding. You've also received an email from Amy that says the rate of the longevity bonus is a percentage based on a number of years. Is there any discussion or questions?
I got a question for Scott. Can council and Commissioners be paid differently, at a different scale, with this long-term pay or? I don't...
You know, I gotta think about that because there are statutes about setting your compensation for elected officials that differ slightly now that I think about it than regular employees. So, you certainly, I think you could have longevity pay for elected officials if you chose to do so. But I think the question would be, could it be implemented midstream or do we have to wait until 2021 to do that? And I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head because there are different rules when it comes to setting your own compensation. So, I don't know. Short version. But I think, I guess the longer version is I think you could do it in 2021 for elected officials.
So currently, right now, they're looking at non, everyone who is not elected official? Like treasurer, the auditor, the clerk?
They don't exclude anyone.
They didn't exclude anyone? Okay.
Well...
I might be able to find that answer, but...
How about this? How about we approve it for everybody but the council and Commissioners? And then once Scott can get back with us, we'll take a look at that at our next meeting. Is that agreeable?
I would agree to that.
I would too.
Bill, I'd like to make...
If that's a motion, I'll second that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can I ask a point of order, just so we're on the same page? Is this retroactive or is it just going forward? Because what we wrote says as of January 1 is the day you determine your seniority, which I understand, but if this is adopted, would it start with the next pay and then go forward or is there a retro element to this when you calculate it's the addition? I'm just curious.
If Commissioners had made it for the whole year so that it would be divided out, the whole year divided out between the rest of the pays for the end of the year?
Okay.
Okay.
For 2020?
For 2020.
I have a motion for Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Donovan to approve the longevity pay excluding the council and Commissioners until the clarification is determined. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. In your packet, you had one from the judge. She does not need that, so please take that out. We're gonna go ahead and do the new business. That way, all the jail can be at the end. That way, if there's further discussions, that, anyone can leave if they need to. Next, we have Dylan Rigan and Greg Good. They're here to talk about the Regional Development Authority and the opportunities that they're giving Vermillion County.
I'm gonna let Greg use his office, but I did want to just introduce him. Greg is the vice chair for the Wabash River Regional Development Authority. And then John Ford is the chair to support this. But I'm gonna let Greg talk about it.
Want me to come up?
Yes, if you would, please.
Sure.
I'm just making sure everyone can hear well.
Well, I thought it was always sunny in Newport. What's going on out there?
Yeah.
I thank, wanna thank the council, and I'm very impressed on how quickly you're rolling through your business. I thought you wouldn't get to me until about 7:30, so I'm deeply grateful to be here. My name is Greg Good, and I, day job is I work in government relations and university communication for my alma mater, Indiana State University, where we get a lot of folks from this great county to pursue their higher education dreams at ISU, and so grateful for this county. And then for civic duty and volunteerism, I have the great privilege of volunteering as the vice chair for the Wabash River Redevelopment Authority. And I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about what that RDA does, as well as present to you an opportunity for, I hope, Vermillion County to be a part of the greater team representing West Central Indiana. In 2015, then-Governor Mike Pence and the leadership of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation put together a piece of legislation called the Regional Cities Initiative. And the idea was how, you know, Indiana does a lot of work in creating a pretty competitive business tax environment, a regulatory environment, and other types of economic incentives to help businesses flourish, small and large businesses. But the folks that are part of the IEDC felt that, you know, there could be a way to invest in other types of projects, construction projects, that could enhance the quality of life and enhance the quality of place for communities throughout the state. The idea being to infuse millions of state dollars into these types of construction projects that could help instill county and community pride and thereby potentially attract new business development and investment in our communities. And perhaps just as importantly, create a sense of community where we don't lose our young people, that our young people can remain in communities and live successful lives and build families and build communities. And so that legislation was passed, and I also want to acknowledge State Senator John Ford, who was champion of that piece of legislation. And the key, though, for any community to become eligible for any kind of state funding was that they had to band together with other counties and other communities in the form of a regional development authority. Some RDAs exist around the state of Indiana, most notably up in the northeast part of the state around Fort Wayne, and I think it's about an 11-county region there. The South Bend area, the Evansville area, they've all been able to pull together these particular defined regions, and those three regions were able to secure multimillion-dollar construction projects invested in communities scattered throughout those regions. No such Regional Development Authority had existed here in the West Central Indiana area. And so, folks from Vigo County, Sullivan County, and Knox County forged together, we put together an application to compete in the Regional Cities Initiative, and we were able to form this defined region. And while we weren't selected as one of the big winners, so to speak, we were able to elevate the profile of a few of our projects that ultimately got funded. And I'll give you an example in Terre Haute, on the north end of Terre Haute, right along the Wabash River, is a project that's called the Riverfront Lofts. Before, and it's a spectacular facility right along the Wabash River that is all housing. Just a few months before we were able to get some IEDC funding to transform that building, it was an abandoned, dilapidated building that was once owned by a canning company, the Canned Tomatoes there, called the, and then it became the Icon Building, but it was a symbol of Terre Haute's past. This idea that once there was a vibrant industry there, and the industry is gone and the building's falling apart, and frankly, the building was, in all likelihood, was going to get demolished. We were able to raise the profile and the vision of that project. We worked with a private developer out of Indianapolis that saw the opportunity, and now it is an example of some really incredible housing right along this beautiful natural resource that connects our counties, the Wabash River. It's those types of projects that the IEDC is looking to invest, projects that probably wouldn't be eligible for OKRA or projects that would be eligible for an indoc funding. And so, while we've been really excited and happy with the three-county, the progress of our three-county region, it has always been our desire to actually grow the RDA to other counties that I think share some common interests and share that beautiful Wabash River. And so, last Thursday on August the 6th, our RDA met, and prior to that meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with Ashley, and I want to thank Dylan for connecting us and just to gauge an initial reaction if Vermillion County would like to join the Wabash River RDA. Our RDA had a meeting on August the 6th, and I was authorized to come before you in this official capacity to extend the invitation. Some questions that I often get, really, what's the commitment of the county? Zero financial commitment. As a matter of fact, it's more of an extra tool for you all to have to uplift some of the projects that may be dreams at this point or projects that you actually think, hey, you know, if we could find another partner, we could actually turn them into reality. And the other question I get is, you know, do incoming member counties have the opportunity to make an appointment to the RDA Board? And the answer is yes. But it's all, it's ultimately a timing issue, and if the county council ultimately decides whether it might be this evening or if you need to give it a couple more weeks and take up that action at a future meeting, it's the county council's responsibility to make the decision to join the RDA, and then it eventually becomes the county commissioner's responsibility to make an appointment on the RDA Board. By statute, our RDA Board can consist of no more than five people, and what we would suggest is as soon as the next individual's term has expired on that RDA Board, if Vermillion County would like to join the RDA, we would want to enter into a memorandum of understanding that would assure your county commissioners that they would have the opportunity to be able to make the next appointment a representative from Vermillion County. Finally, the other thing I would say is this, that I believe approximately five or six projects since the formation of the RDA have received legislative, or excuse me, IEDC state funding. Park projects, art and sculpture projects, a water park for children in Sullivan County, a business incubation center in downtown Knox County. These are the kinds of projects that I think become eligible for funding, and if Vermillion County sees the opportunity and would like to join forces with Knox and Sullivan and Vigo County, then you would have our assurance that some of those projects that are part of your pipeline could be moved to the top. Because we want to be your champions. We want this county to achieve its fullest potential. We want to be your fellow champions and allies in this, and it could be an opportunity for this county to get some great wins and redirect some of those state tax dollars that we send to Indianapolis back here to the counties, or excuse me, the communities here in Vermillion County. I created a memo to Dylan last week. I don't know if anybody would like to have it for your record, but it's just a summary of the RDA and what we're about, and I'm happy if it helps you all to pass this out. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Good, I'd just like to thank you and Senator Ford for taking the time out of your day to come up here and talk with us. I'd like to thank the Wabash River Regional Development Authority for extending an invitation to Vermillion County. I think that this is a home run for the county. I think this, you know, will provide us opportunities to grow quality of life and develop businesses in this county and grow our tax base. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Vermillion County to join the Wabash River Regional Development Authority.
I'll second that.
Can I ask you guys for a point of clarif, oh, point of clarification? There's a statute, we don't do ordinances very often unless they're additional appropriations, and there's different rules that apply to additional appropriations, but an ordinance of this nature requires you to specifically unanimously agree to adopt the ordinance at the same meeting it's introduced. So, what I normally hear in a situation like this is suspend to, a motion to approve the ordinance and suspend the rules and adopt it the day it's introduced.
Okay.
So, if you want to do that, then if there's a unanimous vote to do that, then we would be able to adopt the ordinance this evening, and we don't get to see Greg again.
Okay. Well, I'll rephrase my...
So if you want Greg to come back, then you should...
I'll rephrase my motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Vermillion County to join the Wabash River Regional Development Authority, and after unanimous consent, and to suspend all the rules and adopt on this day of August 10th of 2020.
That'll work. I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right. I have a first for Mr. Major and a second for Mr. Drew to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance to join the Wabash River Regional Development Authority. It is a unanimous vote, so is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ordinance is passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Appreciate your guidance, and we look forward to working with you.
I have a few ideas, too, for some projects, so...
Next, we have a request from the Clinton Public Library. They are needing someone. There is a new statute that went into effect in July. One of the requirements of this new law is to declare a fiscal body that would be responsible for the public libraries. And Scott, you have more information on that?
I think Senator Ford, here, I think we should ask him since he's in the legislature to answer all questions about legislation that was passed last session. No, so you actually, there's a, sometimes it's, there are situations when libraries are required to get approval of an elected body to do things like borrow money or increase their budget by a certain percentage. Sometimes it's confusing as to what board they should go to. Is it the county council? Is it the city council? Is it the township advisory board? Is it, well, town board, I guess, in theory, too? Because not all libraries, we have two libraries in our county. Some libraries have more than that. Some libraries are, we have a township library. We also have a county library that serves the other townships. So, the legislature created this law that requires libraries to, by October 1st, decide who their fiscal body is, fiscal body is, in case they have one of these situations. You have to then say, yes, we agree to that. We agree we are your fiscal body. That thing gets filed with the state library. If the city of Clinton or town of Fairview disagrees and says, oh, no, 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 we think we're the ones, they have so many days to appeal that decision, and then somebody, I don't know who, the LGF or somebody decides who the fiscal body is. So, the, even though the library is in the city and services only the township, it was determined based on the number of parcels. We did this several years ago based on, when they were doing a bond issue, and it was really actually fairly close because the city's not that big, but there's a lot of lots. But it was the county, there were more in the county than there were anywhere else. So, I don't, again, I don't think anyone's gonna fight over it. They don't have any reason to come to you this year, I don't think, for any budgetary approval. It's just a matter of, it's a requirement, they have to do it, and you have to agree that you think you are their fiscal body. I don't know what happens if you say no. I don't know what that puts them, but... The statute didn't deal with that. If nobody wants to adopt them, then I guess they're on their own, but...
So they'll submit their budget to us for review?
No, only if they exceed the growth quotient.
Okay.
Or, I can't remember, if their budget increases by a certain percentage, they have to come to you.
Okay.
Or if they have an operating balance that exceeds 150% of their appropriations, then they have to. If they do a bond issue, they have to. But, and if they keep their budget within the growth quotient and don't grow it by a certain amount, more than a certain amount, if they, I think that's it. I think if their budget increase is within the growth quotient, then they don't have to come for approval. But if they were to exceed that, or they were to do bonds, or if they were to have a big operating balance, they would have to come to you for budget approval.
Just budget approval for those specific items?
No, the whole thing. You know, the whole thing. So, libraries try to avoid that because they prefer to not have to come ask permission. But a few years ago, they did a bond issue in the city, and they had to come for the city, or the Clinton Library, and they did have to come to the county council for approval of that. I know, I was here at a meeting when the Vermillion County Library came to borrow some money, and they had to get the county council's permission. Vigo County Library, same thing. So, it can happen. Don't know that it will, but if they go to do a project of some magnitude, they would have to come to you to get that approved.
Okay. Do you need us to make it a motion?
Yeah, they need you to move to authorize, to designate yourselves or agree that you are the fiscal body, and then ask that consign that and send it back to them.
I'd like to make a motion that Vermillion County Council will declare that the Clinton Public Library is its fiscal body.
Yeah, I think that's right.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Costello, so that Vermillion County Council can be the fiscal body responsible for the Clinton Public Library. And for the discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Before you move on... Before you move on to the jail, I did have a chance to look at the statute on compensation, and it prohibits the compensation of an elected county officer from being changed in the year it was fixed. Unless there is an exception for when the year newly official, newly elected officials take office. But obviously, that's not going to apply to somebody who's getting longevity pay anyway, so.
So from that, we'll have to exclude all elected officials for this 2020?
Yeah. But you could do it, you could do it for 2021, when it comes time to do the 2021 ordinance, if you choose to do so. It's up to you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, let me tell... Mike, we have your commissary report that you sent us. Is this the biannual report? Okay. Did everybody get a copy of that he emailed it? All right. We just have to agree that we all have seen it, we received it. Everyone good with, any questions for the sheriff? All right. Please note that we have received the commissary funders' report. All right. Last item is a couple issues in one. We have the appropriation for the jail, and it is actually two different requests in that appropriation. There is a request for $16,217.52 to pay Baker Tilly. It is for their financial work they have done, including preparing the funding options and scenarios in various meetings. This goes back all the way to last year. I believe they came and did a presentation late last year. That is what that is. And then their commissioners are also asking for $82,500 to redo some plans for the jail. They're looking at approximately 29,500 square feet of additions and renovations, upgrades to the mechanical, electrical plumbing, and upgrades to security electronic systems with an estimated construction cost of around $10 million. The architectural fees for the additional services is $82,500. Before we get into the actual appropriation, though, since there are some mechanical and electrical plumbing issues, Jerry Hawkins and Jim Christie, I believe, are here to talk about their, what they are doing right now. We have an energy study currently. So I thought it was pertinent that we listen to the current information of what they're doing before we decide on doing changes. Dr. Hawkins, if you'd...
Thank you, council members, for allowing us to have a few minutes with you, and I'm going to make some introductory remarks and then let Jim Christie carry the rest of it. I live in Clinton, and I have been associated with the Performance Services and Engineering Company in Indianapolis for nearly 20 years. What we do basically is we build things, we renovate things, and we do that with a particular emphasis on energy efficiency and operational efficiency and comfort issues. So what I'd like to do is, I tried to put as much as I could in my request so that we could kind of speed up things, hit the ground running, and if you have questions, we can get to those because I'm sure you do have. But I wanted to cover the, I wanted Jim to talk about the energy study that's going on because it does have some fiscal implications that I think you should be aware of, and I'm sure you are. And then the other thing I want to do is discuss with you a delivery model which would permit you to do the mechanical electrical plumbing portion of jail project if you chose to, through a guaranteed energy savings contract. And I use guaranteed energy savings contract and performance contracting interchangeably. Guaranteed energy savings contract pertains more to the legislation that was written in '98 that allows municipalities to use as the delivery model. And performance contracting basically refers to the idea that you can contract for parts and pieces, or you can contract for performance. If you contract for parts and pieces and equipment, you get parts and pieces and equipment installed according to the specifications. If you have things installed on a performance contract, you're contracting for performance. If it doesn't work, someone has to fix it. There is no finger pointing. Been through this before. In fact, when I was superintendent at South Vermillion in the late 1990s, early 2000s, we did Van Dyne and Ernie Pile using this very model. We separated our project into contract for general construction and for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. It worked very well. And the reason we chose to do that is because we had just done central school using the same model. We wanted to be sure that we had the same control equipment, the same boilers, same chillers, and air handlers, and so forth and so on. So that's why we did that. And we chose to do that at Van Dyne and Ernie Pile because we had already done central school using this model, and we were having a little difficulty with our A and E firm. And basically, they didn't understand it. And they didn't do that work because they weren't an energy services company. They can't deliver a performance contract. So negotiating back and forth, then, we just pulled the MEP out of that and did it. Did Van and Ernie piles, and then through a performance contract, guaranteed energy savings contract. So what I want to do is let Jim go through the energy study and then touch on some of the advantages of doing, of using a delivery model like this. And they're, they all have a fiscal impact, and you're the fiscal body. We understand that commissioners may have executive authority, and they decide what you're going to do, but they also decide what things to pass up to you as a fiscal body. So I'm going to let Jim talk to you, and if you have any questions for me, I'll come back up and answer for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Commissioner. Our council, how are you doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'll pass these out. You might have gotten those in your packet. As Jerry said, I'm Jim Christie with Performance Services, and Jerry asked me to come and talk a little bit about the benefits of performance contracting specifically within a construction project. My company, Performance Services, we do two, basically Indiana statutes, delivery methods, performance contracting, and design building. So we have those two methods that we go after. We've been in business for 22 years, we've done over $1.6 billion in projects, and we provided 150, more than 150 Energy Star certified buildings as part of this process. So we're really good at driving that energy, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and the energy savings as part of our projects. As Jerry said, I'm going to talk a little bit about the performance contracting, how you can use that within this mechanical, electrical plumbing, whether it's for the courthouse, or the jail, or however you want to approach it. As you go, as I go through the discussion, really, I want you to think about is your past experience in construction projects. Think about the good construction projects that were delivered on time, on budget, little change orders, and very good collaboration between the firm and the owner, you guys. And then think about the challenging construction projects, both in your personal life or on the commercial side, as you guys are doing now in industrial. And just think about the challenges with the change orders that you've had, the challenges with the finger pointing that goes on, the challenges with the length and schedule, things like that. So as you go through this, as I go through this tonight, I just want you to think about those construction projects. As you look at this first slide, it really talks about the difference between plan and spec and performance contracting, and how we do it. And the first thing that stands out to me in this, in this slide is risk. It's risk to you, the owner. You really take on all the risk in this, this delivery method. And you have to take on the risk of errors and omissions, you have to take on the risk of the scope gaps, you have to take on the risk of the low bid contractors. Because what they do is they put out the bids, they respond to bid day, give you the lowest contract, lowest bid. Whoever wins that usually get their C and D players, and then they're looking for change orders all the way through that. So as you think about this, too, you've got, as the first slide shows, you've got the two stars up there. That's two different contracts. And if you're lucky, you're not going to have more with the additional contractors because there's certain delivery methods that you have to now also, as the owner, take on the contracts of the trade contractors. So it's just something to think about because there's a lot of different risks that you, the owner, have to take on. And I've won, our company has won several jobs. We do multiple markets. We do healthcare, which is, as we get into this COVID environment, we do a lot of healthcare projects as well in the operating room. But we do healthcare, we do, of course, municipalities, we've done a jail, done lots of jails, frankly. And, you know, I know that the city of Garrett, for example, they had a project that they did city hall with, they had 60 change orders. It was a nightmare. The owner was involved, all the challenges there. We did the city of Garrett's fire, police fire station, set the guaranteed maximum price, no change orders, and we're still delivering the proper air and everything. We go back on a quarterly basis, what we call four season optimization. So as you look at these different projects, that's the challenge you see is no change orders, those type of things. As you go to the second page, energy savings performance contracting, E S P C. Our job really is to work with you, the owner. It's one single contract with the owner. We take all the responsibility, which is why we're the only ones that can say no change orders. If you ask anybody else in the industry, can you do no change orders, they're going to say no. But we do that because we take on the engineering as well as the construction side of things, and we're responsible for everything. So we can handle that. The risk has shifted from you to us, from a fiscal body. You think about that, all that additional budgets, potentially different change orders, what they call surprise day, surprise day, which is bid day because that's, you don't know what kind of price you're going to get back on your contract. You guys have, the nice thing about what we do is we have the ability to select trade contractors. So when we completed the Tipton County Jail, for example, we were able to select those contractors. It wasn't low bid, though we competitively bid things, but we were able to get the A B contractors that we know, the local contractors that we've worked with in the past. So we have that ability to do that. We set a guaranteed maximum price, and then from that, we work with you guys, you, the owner, to establish and continue to establish the scope and all that. The key thing about this is, from a communication standpoint, as we talk about collaboration, you know, I think we would work, as Jerry said, we're the MEP provider, mechanical, electrical plumbing. We have no issue working with the architect and the engineer. We've done several jobs. We're currently doing a job right now, 180, $167 million project. We're doing the mechanical, electrical plumbing portion as a turnkey provider. So keep that in mind as you go through that. We have no issue working with the architects, no issue working with construction managers. I believe, based on what Jerry and I've talked about, it's the best approach for you because it takes the onus off of you and puts it on us. One thing, as you look down here, it talks about communication and streamline resulting in cost and time savings. I'm going to read something to you that I think is really important. We did a very large job at IU Health Methodist Hospital downtown Indy. The reason why I'm bringing that up, complicated project, very challenging, but because of communication, this is what one of the trade contractors said. "I thought the organization on this job was the best I've seen in my 15 years." This was a sheet metal guy, and we were having to run ductwork through this old hospital. "I have been, I've been in the sheet metal trades. PSI sets schedules trade by trade, timeframes for each trade, and they pretty much hit every deadline on their schedule. I think the fact that they had so many hands on the project involved is what helped orchestrate the organization. They had engineers on the electrical side, control side, and mechanical side actively involved at all times, and I mean all times, day or night. That hit some, we hit some small speed bumps with issues. You would either show up or call me ASAP and get these answers so we can keep moving." The point is, when you start working with these contractors, a lot of times, you said in here, normally when I send an RFI, it takes me two to four days just to get an answer back, or just to get a response, not an answer. So as we're taking that contract, one contract, we do the engineering, we do the construction side, we're taking on that ownership, and so we're able to give direction very quickly. It doesn't have to go through that, which, again, goes back to this bullet, times, costs on time, or savings on time and cost, because we're keeping the contractor moving. As I mentioned, we did the Tipton County Jail. We had no change orders on the jail. That was pretty impressive. And, you know, we have some very happy commissioners, very happy sheriff. But again, that's, we live and breathe that model. That's the total model of design and construction where we take ownership and we take that monkey off your back. If you go to the next slide, this really is a comparison of benefits on, against performance contracting and traditional. This is kind of a summary of what we talked about. And I'll give you an example of this. Parkview Noble Hospital, again, we work in four or five different markets. They came to us and said, hey, we've got a, we've got a plan and spec set here from an engineering firm. They said we need to put in a new air handler. It's going to cost us $3 million. We did this project for $1.5 million. We reused what they, we went in, we re-engineered, we took responsibility for it, we gave them a guaranteed maximum price, hard project. We did the entire controls for the whole hospital because it was a pneumatic control system. So we did all the controls, did an automation. We set the price, we had no change orders. As we went through the hospital, our control team is still involved today because we do what we call four season optimization as part of this performance contracting that Jerry talked about. We're involved, and we continue to be involved. Because what we do is we go through, your building's not going to be right because every change of season, something else, you know, the building breathes differently, acts differently. So we come back in and make sure it's done correctly. We were able to involve the local contractors, the trade contractors that there were A players that we know and love. And similar to Tipton County Jail, when the commissioners had retired electricians and sheet metal contractors come through, what they said was, wow, the quality of workmanship was impressive. And I just heard from sheriff today, he said that there's a few missing exhaust fans. Again, that kind of stuff happens if you don't have, take responsibility in the traditional, with the traditional plan and spec role. And again, we're not here to say, don't use your traditional role. Those, the AEs, the CM firms, they're really good at putting up walls, they're really good at concrete, they're really good at all that stuff. It's the MEP portion that we're talking about that sets us apart and really makes a difference to you guys. Lastly, I'm going to hand this out to you because I think it's important, it goes to the fiscal responsibility of who you guys, of what you guys do. And I'm going to give you the fiscal concern to think, that you should think about as we go through performance contracting. This first one that I'm going to give you is an actual customer that we went through. You can see the insulator, you can see all the different bids that we got from the different contractors. And you can see the difference in the high and the low prices and the medium prices. And I'm only sharing that with you because it's impressive to see, in my career, I've seen hundreds of thousands of dollars saved right here in this bidding process that we do. Now, you as a, the commissioners, as a fiscal body may say, or as a commissioners may say, you know what? We want to use, you guys want to use a certain local contractor. We can do that, and I've done that before. So at Tipton County Jail, we used electrical stuff, there was a local guy we've used before, we trusted him. Because, again, we still have to take on that no change order responsibility, so we have to be able to trust that. But we can take those contractors, but then we typically bid most of the other stuff out, and then we sit down with you, the owner, and say, which one is, what's your preference here? You may have a local contractor that's $1,000 more. I'm like, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use that contractor in that process. But this is impressive from a fiscal body standpoint, to be able to see the differences in prices you see with contractors, and this is an actual job. The other things to think about that I've already mentioned, just from fiscal concerns, is no change orders. If you go back, one, I'm going to go back to the first slide. As you can see on this first slide, there's a lot of markup opportunities. So you have the contractor, the lead mechanical, the lead electrical, they also have suppliers. And they also do the major, they provide major piece of equipment. There's a markup that goes there. Then the contractors get it, and then they send it up to the construction manager, that gets marked up. The point is, is that there's a lot of markup. So from a fiscal standpoint, it saves a lot of money by going with this performance contracting because we buy major pieces of equipment, and so we just have them do labor only. And so there's a lot less markup as you go through this process. Missed scope gaps, we take care of that. And I've always said, there's no change order. There's a few exceptions, very minor exceptions, and when we make mistakes, we take them on. But the few exceptions are, if it's not on a drawing, or I can't get it on a hard ceiling, for example, just can't see it, that's not a thing that we take on. But we take on all of those scope gaps that we missed, or the errors and omissions from a design standpoint. So that saves a lot of time right there, or money there. And as Jerry said, last thing I'll say is guaranteed energy, you get guaranteed energy and operational savings. That Parkview Hospital we did that I told you about, it was, like I said, $1.5 million. They had an Energy Star score of 37. We didn't go into it with setting it up for energy performance contracting. It was a, just a turnkey MEP project to help them solve their hospital OR code issues, pressures, temperatures, humidities. Because we think that way so much, we took them from a 37 to a 77, and we were able to hand them an Energy Star plaque, which we're really proud of that. So we think that way all the time, and then we stick with them. In fact, my controls guy's still in there working with them to make sure things are right. So that's why I think it benefits from a fiscal standpoint, and from a county standpoint, if you look at just carving that piece out, there's a huge benefit to you guys from a cost, time saving standpoint, a cost saving standpoint, and a quality standpoint. there's a huge benefit to you guys from a cost, time-saving standpoint, a cost-saving standpoint, and a quality standpoint. Questions?
You might just take a minute and tell them exactly how the studies work that we're doing.
Okay. Yeah, so, we just went through the jail today. Now, our firm, back in twenty sixteen, there was an R F Q issued, and we went through that as well at that time. We kind of re-upped the jail study, or we're looking at it today with my engineer, and we also went through the courthouse today. So, kind of at this point, we've just gone through it. The idea is to help obviously see is what, I think Jerry's done a really good job of replacing the lights and things like that with L E D, and I'm pretty impressed with that. But the idea is to see how we can help you save energy in the process of renovating, whether it's the jail. So, we're gonna give you that energy savings along the way as well. At this point, we don't have the study completed, other than we just went through the jail today, and, but we do expect to see the energy savings of it. You know, things like the sheriff mentioned to us today, I mean, again, exhaust fans in a building, you gotta have those. And there was, they were missed for whatever reason. I don't know, Sheriff, why, but I just bring that up because I think that's, that's the kind of mistakes that happen if you don't have that expertise in mechanical electrical plumbing sometimes.
I have a question. Do you guys have a ballpark number? I know you just went through the jail today, but could you give us just maybe a ballpark estimate of what you guys think that needs to be fixed and what problems you see at the jail that need to be addressed specifically with regards to M E P?
So, a couple of things. On the price side, we don't obviously have an answer for that at this point. Because there's actually two answers, and I think this, I really believe in my heart, when Jerry asked me to talk to this, that I think it really benefits the county, and I believe it benefits the sheriff, and I'll tell you why, and I'll go back to answer your question. If you select us as a performance contracting company, we can start working with the sheriff and you, the county, to start fixing things immediately. And as Jerry had in his write-up, one of the things we'll do is, if we're selected on the qualification side, we'll come in and put together the design, we'll put together the pricing for the immediate stuff that's not being affected by the design of your, with your design team. And we can start fixing that. What we, what we'll do is we do that, you have no obligation at that point, until we put the pricing together and we come back to you and say, "Here's what it is for the immediate stuff." Your answer, or the question, the answer is a challenging one because there's a lot of stuff going on with the jail at this point. So, I can't, you know, and what they're doing at this point, you know, they're remodeling, or they're redesigning with the existing jail. And so, I can't give you a good answer on that piece of it as far as the dollars that are available.
Okay. Well, what would you say is some of our number-one problems at the jail with regards to M E P that you've seen?
Well, I'm not the engineer, but I will, I will go through, you know, he was there with me today, and I can actually get you a better answer than I can give it right at this point because he actually went through it. He, I came in about eleven o'clock, so I didn't get a chance to go through it. However, I think we talked about the, there's the exhaust issue that they have. They have H V A C issue. They have an exhaust issue right now. I mean, getting fresh air into the building, those type of things is what I'm hearing. But I can't give you a very specific answer, other than I can get back to you guys, like he's going through it. The whole idea of the, what we're doing right now is doing a, what we call a preliminary study, so we can kind of give you an idea of what's going on in the building. So, I would-
But we did have some, we did have some rough estimates of issues in the twenty sixteen study we did.
No, it was, it was more, Kevin said, "Here's what the, here's what some of the issues are," and I honestly, I gotta go back, and I got that. I can get that back to you guys. What I'll do is I'll send you that. Here's a kind of, here's a rough idea of what it was. But we didn't have-
What's a possible timeline, then, for the study results?
I would say probably in the next month or so. Because they, you know, they take a lot of time to, to your point of first budget. Now, we're only gonna be able to, at this point, give you budget numbers because we're just kind of making estimates at this point of budget numbers. If a company, and whether it's us or whoever else, the performance, if they're selected, then they get down and they start putting the drawings together. They go through the bidding process and get you the, we can get you budget numbers.
I was just gonna say, if you could, I have some familiarity with it, but I think it would be helpful if you could explain a little bit of the process that has to happen here as far as R F Qs and then selecting based on, you know, scores, and then moving to the next level and that sort of thing.
Yeah. So, from a process standpoint, again, we haven't been selected to do the actual design, and then, none of us have. But if you look at the guaranteed energy savings process, the first thing you guys, the commissioners would do is, would send out a, would say, "Yes, we wanna do a guaranteed energy savings R F Q." We did this in twenty sixteen. They would send it, they would advertise it twice in the newspaper. They would also have a, basically, an R F Q proposal that's out there that says, "Here's how we want you to respond. Here's the qualifications of the company. Here's the experiences. Here's what we wanna see." So, two or three companies respond to that R F Q. So, basically, you just advertise, you approve it, you advertise for it, two or three companies respond. The committee, whatever that committee is, scores it, so they'll have a score in that R F Q that you guys put out there. You'll have a score in your books that you'll say, "This portion is twenty points. This portion is thirty points." And you'll score the different companies based on whoever that committee is or that the commissioners select. You have a score in your books. Basically, the top company wins with that, obviously, if you, you know, one of us gets ninety points and the rest of them get less. Whoever that company is gets selected and approved to start the study, the process. Again, you guys don't have any obligation, go ahead.
Mr. Parker, to interject. So, this study you're talking about is a study you've already done in twenty sixteen? Is that correct?
We did a study, a R F Q. So, basically, what we did was an R F Q response to what you guys put out in twenty sixteen, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, is it the same thing as twenty sixteen, or is it completely different?
No, it's gonna be different at this point. I mean, there's gonna be things we're gonna use from the twenty sixteen study, but we're gonna update, and then we're gonna respond. We're gonna have a preliminary study put together before this whole R F Q process goes out.
Basically, in twenty sixteen, they were just looking for people who have the qualifications to do this.
So, it wasn't a proposal where there was pricing that was involved?
So, your study will reflect the current conditions, but if we chose to renovate some of the building and do renovation of the inside right now, how would that play into what you can do, then? Would you work with us for a new plan if, once we had it? Or do you do the plan for the mechanical electrical plumbing if renovations are done?
So, we would work with your firm, whoever your A E firm that you would choose to work with. So, we've done this a number of times, as Jerry said. We've done it where we do the mechanical electrical plumbing, but work with the firm, the A E firm that you guys are working with on the general, the building design, and then the construction, of course, you have the construction manager as well. But we would be the one to stamp it. We'd be the one to design and stamp it, working with the firm because we don't know how far they're gonna put the building, you know, out in the parking lot or whatever. So, that portion, again, we would do the upfront portion that is really not affected by the renovation, but then we would also design the mechanical electrical plumbing of, with the renovated area. The thing which, the thing with the sheriff's building right now and your building right now, is as my engineer said today, and I've seen this happen time and time again, we're gonna go in, we're not gonna replace like-for-like. You need a redesign because you've got outside air issues, and you've got things that you have to deal with. So, one of your questions, there's a lot of outside air issues. You have, the other big thing that you have, you have no negative pressure room. So, to answer your question, you know, by law, you have to have, in the medical area, negative pressure. The new jails we're designing today, the entire intake is negative pressure. So, my guess is we're gonna be redesigning that whole look and feel to include those things that you need, the outside air, the negative pressure, that kind of stuff.
Could you explain a little bit about your guaranteed energy savings after? Let's just say in theory that we did the addition, they did the M E P, and tell us about the guaranteed, or, I'm sorry, the energy savings in a maintenance contract. What you guys do similar to, I think, a lot of the schools and libraries, if I'm correct?
So, from a guaranteed energy savings, there's actually two components, which is true energy savings, and then there's operational savings. So, we as performance contractors, what I guess, let me back up. The biggest thing that you guys do use performance contractors for, yes, is to save energy, but really, it's a project delivery method. It is the M E P experts out there, out there doing that work because oftentimes, you turn a building over, you get a building turned over to you. What doesn't work? It's usually the H V A C. It's usually all the environmentals. And so, you use a performance contractor or turnkey M E P company to make sure that those things are done properly. So, it's a project delivery method using local trade contractors, all that kind of stuff. To answer your question, you'll get two components. You'll get an energy savings, and you'll get an operational savings. Bulk of a project like this will probably be operational savings, which is what we call capital cost avoidance. So, there's, just you guys are very clear on that. It's really a figured-out way to get the best company to do the M E P work for you. You'll have those savings. The State Board of Accounts accepts these energy and operator, and they could be fifteen percent energy and eighty-five or whatever percent operational, which includes that capital cost avoidance. And that could be the bulk of it. A lot of customers use that. You turn it in. You'll get, definitely get the energy savings you, that you can get out of that building, that you can squeeze out of that building, but you'll probably see most on the operational side, and I'm sure if you're familiar with it, that's what you'll probably see, and that's the capital cost avoidance, where you're replacing equipment today versus waiting for five or ten years, and getting his building the way it should be set up. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Are, would you see elements of the guarantee here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, 'cause-
You always see two components. You see an energy savings and an operational savings.
But the guarantee part is that if you don't get those savings-
Right.
Then what happens?
Well, then, we write a check to you guys. But again, the energy, we can guarantee, there's only so much energy we'll guarantee in this project, so the bulk of it will be the operational that are more capital, but we will guarantee the energy savings, and we'll write you a check if we don't get those. So, it's a combination of those.
You know, one thing I wanted to say too, which I follow this since, since being a K L Z day here, I don't know, twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen or whatever. And I hear this occasionally about, "Well, now we gotta start again." No, you don't have to start again. You spent a lot of money. You own a lot of things. It's not starting again. It's trying to put the pieces together a little differently, a little more efficiently. And in a way so that, I've seen some beautiful buildings. They just don't work well. So, you want it to work well. If that worked well, someone had to fix it, and that's by contract. I, I mean, I could take fifteen minutes to say four stories about-
There was a brand-new hospital. I won't say where, but it was in, I'll call the Southland area. They have the pharmacy lab, exhaust hood, things like that. In order to pass the requirements from the state, they had to shut down part of their third floor air handler system. And my point is that, Jerry's exactly right. That stuff happens all the time. And sometimes it's just value engineering, you know, no fault of, you know, we're also, we have architects and engineers. We understand value engineering, so it's no fault. But that stuff happens. They're saying, "Just cut five million dollars." And then all of a sudden, the A E's are going, "Well, how do you do that without hurting the building?" So, some of that is not, that's just the blame of the fiscal part of it, you know, that you have to be careful of.
One last question. Could you guys talk about some of the municipalities that you guys work for in this area, and some of the jail projects that you guys have done?
So, we do a lot of performance contracting. St. Joe County was one we just finished. It was about a ten million dollar project. That included the jail. It included the police, fire station, things like that. We do a lot of performance contracting. The good thing about our experience, I'll go back to, so we do several, in the city of Indianapolis, or county, Marion County, we did also a big project for them, which included their police stations, their fire stations, their jails, juvenile detention, things like that. So, we've got a lot of that experience. The Tipton County Jail was the first, this is another thing we do, progressive design-build project in the state of Indiana for jails. So, not only are we a performance contractor, we're a design builder. And typically, what we see with our traditional market as well, the schools, we start with a guaranteed energy savings project. The owners start seeing the value, as Jerry saw when he was superintendent, of a true M E P firm doing that portion of work. And then we start getting into the design-build world of whatever it is, schools, jails, whatever. So, we've done one progressive design-build jail because it's the first in the state of Indiana. It went so well. We had no change orders. The customer's extremely happy and is doing services all the time. The commissioners are really happy with that. But we've done dozens of jails under the energy. It's really the same process. It's turnkey M E P or turnkey A E design and construction.
Do you know how large that jail was?
Pardon?
How large was that jail?
That jail was, well, that was eighty-two beds, actually eighty-four beds, about thirty-six thousand square feet is what we did for that jail.
And you could, could you tell us what the price of that new jail was? Was it around fourteen, fifteen million?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was. Now, there was, they had an owner rep that did some other things with finance and stuff, so I think it was larger than that, but it's hard to be. And that was frankly, all in. That was the soft cost. They always talk construction costs. That was soft cost and hard cost.
So, that's, that's not just including construction. That's including your fees and legal fees.
Now, I will, I will say, to that point, yes, that is, and that's what we did it for. Construction costs are going up about six to ten percent a year because materials are going through the roof and labor's going through the roof. So, I heard this separately on another conference call, or a conference. They're saying half percent to three-quarters percent a month that things are going up. So, I just share that with you because, yes, and that was just completed last, you know, basically this last year, this year. And so, as long, you know, that's the, we used to say three percent, three and a half percent inflation. Now, they're saying six to ten percent inflation. So, I would, you know, suggest as the longer you wait, you think, at this point in this market, now things have changed. You know, markets could slow down. People get a little hungrier. The trades, it's really not, it's the trade contractors who are so busy right now that their, their prices are going up and the material prices are going up as well. So, we're seeing that quite a bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. Now, we'll go back to the appropriation. Yeah. Would, our Q A W is here to talk about the plan they have that is in that appropriation.
Good evening, everyone. Sunday, Joe, our great W Corporation. Seems like, you know, we're getting to be old friends. We just come up here every couple of months and then we talk about it, and, you know. It's been interesting so far. So, a couple of months ago, the jail committee made a recommendation for a revised scope of project that was folded onto the mission list. And then, they, the commissioners agreed to move on to the next stage of the design of a revised scope of project, and they sent that to you for approval. What we are proposing, and I think you have copies of the A R document, that is the revised scope of project. Do you have that in your book?
I'll go back to the right. Do you want me to copy?
And, as you put it perfectly, I think the revised scope of the project was about twenty-nine thousand square feet of renovation and addition, a replacement of the existing fire report, a newer administration remodel in addition, renovation of the housing, the existing housing, cells, control rooms, upgrades to the mechanical electrical plumbing that Jim Bill mentioned, that's tentatively today. Upgrades to the security system that's in place right now. There's quite a bit updated with it, and we are looking to upgrade that. And the estimated cost of destruction was about ten million dollars on that scope of project. So, I have a couple of slides here from the schematic design report we did two years ago, just to kind of give you an idea of what the project might entail. just to kind of give you an idea of what the project might entail. Here's the existing site plan. You have the jail project that's hashed out here. There's existing parking lot here and a couple of garage buildings to set out there. This was the result of the schematic design with a pod that used to be thrown out here. That's been blocked off because the decision was made not to do, to have been passed because of our reduced schedule. We had some additional parking. We had shown some additions to the administration space and the proposed new sounding port. Again, whether this is the actual decision that we're going to go with after our first phase of design is done, we don't know. So assumptions were made to come up with this decision or this design and working through the design with sheriff and the staff. We'll see how this design plays out. But this was a result of what came out of that. Any questions on this site plan before I move on? Now, here's the flow plan of the existing jail. You have your existing linear housing block out here with the central control room. You have the administration spaces, RCA, your Sally Port, and your intake and booking area here. Again, there are multiple issues with the facility in itself, but none of them are sites that can be fixed with a long-term solution. That's not going to be abandoned for the, for the new GJ. We're looking at providing a solution that's going to be twenty-plus years out. So we don't see the need to build a new facility because this structure still has good problems. There's still a lot in it and I think we're certainly got a lot of life out of it. I put this, compiled this plan together kind of quickly today. Bear with me a little while I'm walking to, to go in here. So this is the existing housing pod that we're pretty much going to leave out here. There are issues with plumbing. There's issues with piping. There's issues with lighting, HVAC, security systems, all of that with this, with the existing housing that we are intending to upgrade. That is all part of the scope of that. We originally talked about doing a housing pod to the, on the upper side of it, but since our population count is down, we don't see that as being something that's required. One thing we do want to make sure that is very clear to everyone that in the future, if there's a need for additional beds, we want to plan so that we can add additional beds at some point. And still we need the support. This green area that you see at the bottom, that was from the design, from the schematic design two years ago, often standard administrative space. Sheriff is woefully short on training room spaces, offices, things like that. And so this was the design that came out of that. Our intent is to revisit the design with him to make sure that all the design decisions that we made, stuff into this mask at some point. I still apply. And so whether this remains as is or changes, we'll have to see how that design progresses. The Sally Port again doesn't function well as it is. It was our intent to replace this with a new functional Sally Port here. Existing intake ducting kitchen area again. Back when we did the original schematic design report, we were going to use some of the existing housing to move the kitchen for, you know, a better, more efficient location. But if there's a decision was made not to do that, we're going to have to work with sheriff to make sure that the design and the layout of all that space is optimized. Again, what shape that takes, how that works out, that is something we'll have to work to in design. One of the areas that we did see a concern with was the laundry spaces. And we were showing a minor addition to that to accommodate that. But again, until we get into the design, figure out what is really required, it's hard to exactly say how much of an addition is required and what shape the system is. But that's what the first phase of the design is for, is to determine the exact scope and to give you a better price on what this thing will cost. Couple of things Jim mentioned, and I, we worked together before, right? So I'm not going to, you know, cut and pass anyone on this. But the question you got to ask yourselves is, what is really important to you? I mean, is it guaranteed savings, no change orders? All of that is what you're looking for? Are you looking for the most efficient design? You're looking for, you know, local contractors? You're looking for long-term solutions? And I know the answer is probably all of it, right? And one thing I got it, you know, we have to admit, there's no such thing as free money. So no matter what delivery method you use, there are always contingencies that come into play that protect, the contractors protect the deliverer and so that they're not, you know, basing it on unknown. Who has control of the contingencies? Whether it's you, the owner, or whether it's the CM or the CFC or the performance service contractor, that's, I guess, the question that you've got to ask yourselves. So again, our role as the architects will be to provide the professional services, make sure you are, you're protected from miscellaneous change orders, things like that that could happen on the project, and to give you the best project for a long-term solution. I know I went through a lot. If you have any questions that I missed, or if you have any questions for me, I'd have to go after them.
So from looking at the existing plan to the new plan there, the proposed, the items in yellow, like the gold color on the far right, those aren't really changing from what you have now, except for the laundry addition. Is that correct? Most of the changes are in the green?
No, we will be seeing changes in this. The thing that I'm trying to point out here is that the layout of the intake ducting laundry and all of that stuff, when we did the schematic design two years ago, was based on the assumption that we could use some of the existing housing to move those spaces out. So actually, we had laundry and kitchen and all in this existing housing area because we had a hundred beds.
Right. I'm saying like existing, like what is actually at the jail right now? Like the previous slide?
Yeah. So the existing laundry is right here.
Uh huh.
And that is not adequate for what's going on.
Right. Because there was a laundry addition. But like the kitchen's not moving?
The kitchen, I don't think for the bed count that we have right now, I think it's a very recent bed. I don't see the reason to update the kitchen extensively. If there is a need for additional beds that need to be sold out of that kitchen, it's always easier to add newer, larger equipment than it is to, you know, redo the entire kitchen. That can be one of the most expensive spaces to redo in kitchens.
Right. Like I see the laundry addition on the new, on the proposed design, but a lot of that in the gold is not necessarily changing, but a lot on the left side of the design is different from the current situation at the jail.
And again, this is, this is first pass, you know, this is without any, you know...
Right. I just wanted to clarify, like that was what we're...
Yes. But we will see extensive renovations across the entire facility. I mean, there's issues with negative air pressure where we need it, air tract circulation, geothermal system that's in place right now. That's, you know, been banned there forever. It's one of its issues. There's water quality levels issues in the facility. There's, there's a lot that needs to be done. But again, you know, we strongly believe that this facility itself can be modified and updated to be a long-term solution.
Would it be a long-term solution even if we had to add additional beds in the future? I mean, would we have to expand some of the areas there? I mean, does this design allow for that?
There would be some things that you might want to think about is the kitchen out here, whether the expansion takes place there, or if we don't put a lot of effort into it right now, in the future, when you're adding more beds, I would take some of the existing housing and move the housing to the, the new pod. One of the benefits of the new popular design that, you know, we were recommending initially was the ability to manage larger populations with fewer staff and more efficiently. With the linear jail like we have right now, we are going to see some challenges, but adding cameras and technology, I think we can achieve a certain level of safety and security for inmates and staff, but it's not going to be as efficient as a popular design.
How big, how big of an area in square feet is this administrative addition?
I think it was around fifty-seven hundred square feet, something in that range.
That's just the addition, not the addition in renovation?
That's just the addition.
Okay. And how much do they have right now?
I think they're barely two thousand. And if, and if you've probably seen the jail and all the training spaces are, you know, you know, of course, they have air circulation problems, but they're breathing the same air as the inmates. And sometimes somebody brings something to the jail, it's right in the stockroom.
And with the Sally Port, we're just going to tear the old one down and then build the new one right back at the same spot, right?
That was the intent. I think the, the walls inside the Sally Port are just, do not allow for larger vehicles and ambulances and stuff to come in and, you know, it's just overseas people. So yeah, that's the intent.
Do we know how many people are in jail currently or what's been the average for the year?
Fifty-two did it.
Fifty-two? Do we know what the average has kind of been running or?
I couldn't say it. I called in one after we looked at the sheet.
Okay.
The change in time has helped, but maybe at least most of the inmates, not by a number of them, but by the volume released others.
What kind of other renovations planned for the housing unit portion?
So the housing unit, we would see mostly HVAC system upgrades, plumbing definitely the challenge. I think there's some very small plumbing pipes under, underground that need to be upgraded. Lighting, I think that lighting has been done a lot, but security systems do need upgrading there from door controls to, there's some shower units, emergency shower units, plumbing fixtures that could definitely see enough.
That's why it remains, it'll remain functional during that. So is there room, Sheriff, to move, is there room to move inmates to different portions of the jail to do this construction work? Or how does that work?
Certain inmates, you can't let them get in. We'd ask surrounding companies to hold them for us.
During construction?
Because thousands got theirs open. We helped them for them until they got theirs open. They promised to do the same. They helped us out. Our county was with the...
Okay.
I think the most efficient way to do the renovation would be to move inmates out. Working with inmates in, in operation is doable, it's very expensive.
Right.
And it delays the whole process. So...
It's dangerous too, perhaps?
Yeah. I mean, you've got to count every tool that goes in and out every nail of this here. So yes, it does have a chance. But we worked projects, I mean, we just finished Cozy County and Green County where they were operational while we worked in those facilities. And they did it. It's, it's a pain to do what is going on, but it works out that we own it.
Have you noticed any structural deficiencies in, in the housing unit or the administration portion?
Structurally, no. I think it's built like a, a wall. There are some roofing issues. There's no gutters and proper drainage off the roof, which always creates a problem with ice and stuff like that. So it is our intent to improve that in the first. But structurally, bones are good. We don't see the need to replace any structural elements.
I should hope it should be structurally sound because if not, then we couldn't be housing people in there in the first place or having employees in there, you know.
Right.
Well, I mean, after 20 years, you could have cracks develop, you know, gapped openers, foundation issues that show up 20 years later.
Shouldn't be.
Oh, there shouldn't be.
Built the last.
That's what I'm asking. So...
Do you have a breakout of what you think the MEP will cost versus the Sally Port cost and the administration addition? Do you guys have any idea?
At this point, that's why we're recommending going through the first phase of the project is to establish what those costs would be. Once the design is done, once the extent of the work is determined, we have a much better idea of what those costs and breakdowns would be.
And this will be the third systemic design that we've done with you, correct?
No, this is the second.
Second?
Yeah.
So what was the first one in 2016?
That was a study that was done originally. After that, the family hired QAW to do the design of the project. First phase was a schematic design, which we completed two years ago. And then we were sort of supposed to do it to, to update and redo the schematic design based on the revised scope.
And do we, did you guys get into any, any design or with any of the plans yet for that last schematic design? Or, I mean, were you guys in the process of starting engineering on the project?
Two years ago?
Yes.
Yeah, we did some here and looked at the entire facility. We established what the needs were and what the resolution was. And that's why we came up with the pod design addition and the conversion of existing housing into efficient medical spaces, worker dorms, laundry, things like that. So all of that was understood and presented and discussed before we came up with that solution.
Well, I mean, to me, it just seems like this is almost the exact same, but just about that extra housing pod. So I'm just a little curious of why we should be paying for another schematic design that we already paid for one once before when you guys did a lot of that work. Would you say that's correct?
Well, there are some parts of it that we would definitely be reusing, let's say, and, you know, we've got to revisit it, make sure that those conditions and those situations still apply to this design. So not everything needs to be redone, but there are parts of it that we're going to have to rethink and say. The decisions that came up with that schematic design are different now because of the change of the scope of the project. But does that still apply? Does this administration re, need rework? Does, are the space apartments still the same? Or is there a shift in what is needed and what's desired?
Tim?
I got a question because one of the things that started all this is because it's overcrowded. My question is, Mike Phelps, who is the prosecutor and the judge, how it's going to be before we have the same problem we had before? And there's been some changes that lowered that amount of people we have in there. And if we go and all of a sudden here in two years, we're back to the same problem. We overcrowded. What have we done? I mean, we improved the infrastructure, you know, the parts of operation. But this thing probably won't go back and bite us. I mean, Mike could tell me, it's not, I don't know. But I think it's something that needs to be thought about. I mean, we had to come back in a couple of years and say, hey, the jail's full. What do we do?
Well, you know, are you asking our QAW?
You guys are correct. I'm on the process here. But with the jail population cut down for COVID and the early release for people, whatever it is.
I believe that's the Indiana Supreme Court that initiated criminal world 26.
Right now, we got some changes and we're low. What's going to happen in two years? I don't, I, someone better than me has got to answer that question. What if we get back to the same problem we had that started this process?
Tim, if I could interject.
I, I don't know the answer. I'm just saying, what are we going to do if it does?
Mike?
Ask Sheriff Crowley at the Fifth and County. He's been a part of the private policies on free trial release.
Can I have a problem? I mean, someone in the corner needs to be hearing the key ness.
After the jail, who have been a part of this free trial release at this court.
Have their numbers been reduced?
And then we'll tell you exactly the same thing. I'm not going to say it. You need to call and ask it yourself. Because I've been saying this about since 2015 to the ones listening, or only a few are listening. So ask Sheriff Crowley at the Fifth and County, the one that they're talking about. Good man. They don't tell you the truth, but you're all the ones.
Well, I guess my question is, you guys had a jail committee meeting. Was the judge and prosecutor present at that meeting? Did they address these concerns at this jail?
Never got, really got the answer.
But, but if I could interject again, from this meeting, the jail committee recommended to go with this. Is that correct? So I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to funding a $22 million project with the addition, but I feel like either the committee or the commissioners need to decide what they want to do. And I mean, the council's put in a situation where, you know, we're asking questions, well, is this going to be feasible in three years? Well, what's the committee doing? What's the commissioners doing? I mean, you guys sent it to us tonight and I mean, I don't know. I just feel like, like Mike, you know, for five years, it's just been...
I don't have a problem. I'm just saying, I'm just asking you that question.
One number we're at now, since COVID, the free trial release started January 1st statewide, everyone has to do it. But each county has to build their own birdie, you know. statewide, everyone has to do it. But each county has to build their own birdie, or some version of free trial release. We have already placed. It's built, designed by the judge, it's controlled by every county. But how do you just buy a hundred and some beds when you, at the time, we were down to twenty-seven beds, we're back at fifty-two already, where's that gonna be in a year? I don't know, I don't know the answer.
So at the end of March, we were down in the twenties.
If you talk to the eleven pilot counties, I know the two of them, I tell you, that work great, because they're the ones that were funded ten years ago under federal medicine. But, well, are we gonna be a year from now, a year and a half? I, I don't know. I don't think anybody in the state can answer that right now.
So the lowest our.
Eleven pilot counties can't.
So the lowest our count was late March, and it was in the twenties. And now we're, we were in the low twenties in late March.
When COVID started.
And then it has now gone to, what'd you say, always fifty-two?
Fifty-two.
Today?
Right, yeah, I did that same thing, standing around forty, forty-five to forty-eight, pretty gone up to fifty-two, fifty-three, and it'll, it'll change by two or three all those, all those days, you know.
So have you seen a steady incline then since the twenties, or has it dropped again? Is it continuing to increase?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
I can give you an updated copy of that daily sheet that I gave you guys before.
Okay.
Well, Mike, how many active warrants do you have right now?
Well, they've got a bunch of the misdemeanor ones out, mainly a little one, but the only one sort of misdemeanor warrant, so that number's down. It's still, you know, around a hundred and fifty.
But with that hundred and fifty inmates, we'd be over our capacity, because it's seventy-eight, right? Is that the jail capacity?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So, I mean, what would?
When have they ever done a warrant roundup?
I'm just asking, if you have that act of warrants out.
We've not had a warrant roundup since I'm the sheriff, because I'm not putting any more than what we already have in there, just by doing.
I mean, are these people dangerous, or they just forgot their court date?
Some of them are, yeah. Some of them are also out of facility, some of them are in prison when they're down there, you know. You know, then you just have your repeat and you should, violation of probation, violation of parole, or not parole, but parole detention. That's what you're gonna hear from those pilot counties. Just with free trial release, people still don't feel anything. And what Sheriff Crowley told me is, Mike, wait till you're due. But I recommend you guys call them. I mean, all these sheriffs are good people, I'll talk to you about it, but may not want, every single one of you wanna make separate calls, but maybe, oh, I'll get you that, because you need to hear it from them, not they. They, they believe in all that, it's still, this is news to the rest of the state dealing with it first, but what I do see is a lot of the, the beat misdemeanor staff, they have to be booked, they have to take them back to their car, it's not resonating, unless it's a battery, a microphone or something like that, vital related trouble. But officers statewide are burned, I'm driving them to the jail, they have to wait for them to be booked, and then drive them back to their vehicle or place where they just shut them up for them. So, that's the negative side that I've seen with free trial release. And some people will say, well, it was a deadly tough.
Is it working larger in the larger counties versus the smaller counties?
Is a lot.
Is it creating war of a reduction of inmates in the larger counties versus smaller counties? I mean, is, is there a difference in county size that's affecting this?
I mean, the, the eleven pilot counties were designed for, there were two small ones, several medium ones, and several large. One was then for, the other one, was for things started with federal lawsuit, ten or eleven years ago. That's kind of what everything was designed for. And they will tell you, there's some good aspects to it, but there's a lot of bad. You just won't see people get arrested for certain things anymore, because it's a complete waste of time. Literally, the first two minutes of your arrest, we had to make the officer stay awake to take them back, or they'll be walking in the middle of the night, downstairs in sixty-three, and guess who's gonna get called, because they're walking down sixty-three. So, they had to wait till they were booked in, and they'll take them back to their vehicle and, for their, for their, for their, for their death. But, I don't know, we're at a catch twenty-two, I don't know the answer. I, I wish I did. I hope maybe our criminal justice system can do something, and we'll, we'll, you know, if they were able to penalize many after COVID, why wouldn't they secondarily pursue them? A few of them were sick, and that's the ones that I personally have to have removed nonviolent. We have not let, at any time, anybody in the jail. But, but the three that had sicknesses, definitely have been affected if we got booked in the jail, I've had that problem. Now, I can't, I can't, I didn't have anything to do with the arrest of them, but certainly getting back to stuff like that. And then, and all these, you know, kind of technical they do, if we had gotten in the jail or still do today, it's a problem. We have zero way of isolating anybody for a reasonable period of time. By the time you have two or three, hopefully, holding cell isolated, now here comes your, your next person in, and that isolation has to start all over. Or you just cut these out early, move them back to the block, and, you know, hope for the best. That's, but that's going on pretty much everywhere.
Does this new plan that's on the screen, does that provide you with any additional?
There's no detailed changes in there. On the right-hand side is where I need to change it, and that's what it currently looks like. I just talked to Sanjay before the meeting about that. I think he's trying to give you an idea of space-wise what we're talking about. The admin area was pretty much what we designed for day one, but on the right side, there'd be, have to be some technical changes, because we're still talking, we need two padded cells, and to, and to get the one that we have completely away from E block. And we have somebody in there, they're riled up, they're making noise, they keep on, largest blocks riled up all night long, or sometimes all day in and out. We have three of those in there right now. We have one padded cell, we have three active, unfortunately, mental ill people, we can't just let go. But, it's, that's something we didn't know until like five years ago. You would get a mental person through there, I don't get it wrong, but not at the rate we do it anymore. It's not, it's, they're there all the time now. It's not once in a great while. And then there's, it just seems like there's more and more of that.
I mean, one of the other things that was part of the original design was a separate medical suite, and maybe, you know, that is part of the scope on, on this project. We'll have to look at it in design.
But back to your question, the thing was, the taking off, the add-on was made was based on my recommendation. I don't know the numbers, but I've been waiting for years to get some things fixed there, and it's not happening. I have this, I'll give concessions at this point, anything. Fix my HVAC, get my automation system completely redone, get the doors replaced, whatever it takes to get the place working properly, you know.
Right.
Shower, I mean, I can sit here and go on and on and on. Come and, and look, I, I think most of them do the same.
Is there a list anywhere?
Nightmare daily.
Is there a list anywhere that has been compiled of the things that, the major things that need fixed currently?
That we fix?
Well, that need to be fixed.
Yes.
I mean, have we looked at fixing what needs fixed right now?
I've been submitted for the commissioners seven times. And I'm not like them, man, that's what they, they're making the decision, something needs to be fixed and done, or asking you for the money to do it. Now you're wanting to come back and re-explain everything I'm required to explain then to you guys. Are you the financial part, or are you the commi, I mean, if somebody strikes me out, I'm starting to get frustrated, and I told these guys today, I'm burnt out, I'm deteriorating, I just want the stuff broken to bits.
I understand. And I think we've had some, we were supposed to have a joint meeting, and then COVID happened, and it got canceled, and it's never been updated. So, the last understanding that I believe we had was still looking at a new jail. So this dynamic of just doing a partial redo is relatively new to us, to where, that's, we're just trying to understand the process of what's being asked of us.
The, Tim, Commissioner Yocum's question earlier about what happens in two years, this plan for this particular renovation gives you a lot of what you wanted for the administration side, I believe?
Yeah, the only thing that's doing is taking off the add-ons, but everything now, well, we're not moving the catch and the wondering all that, so now we gotta find a way to squeeze that in on the addition on the right.
Right, so the question becomes, you know, if we go with the original brand-new pod system, we spend a lot of money, and the prison, or the, I don't wanna say prisoners, the inmates population doesn't increase, it stays twenty or thirty, then we feel like we've wasted all a bunch of money on a jail that we didn't need. But by the same token, we don't know that. They don't know that, you don't know that, the sheriff doesn't know that. We know we have a problem with, fifty percent of that building's deficient. So if we do this, the administration side renovation, we don't change the housing unit side. You stated that in the future, of course, the cost will increase if we ever have to go back and say, well, now we need a pod, you know, in three years, we gotta, we'll come back and revisit it. But it's based on information today, right now, that we don't have. We don't, I don't have information three years from now, I just don't have it, and I won't have it. But if we do have to come back three, four, five years from now, in this particular, we, we say we go through with this right here, what happens if we need forty more cells, or forty more beds, as you call it? Do we add on to that linear pod, or do we tear that off and build a new pod, you know, at an increased cost, which it will? I mean, I understand, you know, you're not gonna, it's not gonna be the same price. And that's fine, we gotta accept that. But is this, is this particular plan expandable? I mean, can you expand that linear, or does it just create more problems?
You're correct, it's just not the most ideal situation. I would strongly recommend that at that point, you think about doing a pod, and then doing something else with the linear part of it.
Yeah.
You can do recovery blocks, you can do inmate worker dormitories, you can do program spaces, you can do a lot with that.
Yeah.
Works for that function, but not for housing as well. So, at that point, I would recommend that you.
So you could say you could, you could demolish a portion of that pod, or you could, you could, you know, demolish, say, a particular end of that, build the pod, and then use the other part, or something like that, I don't know, it's endless possibilities, but.
I'm all in favor of that, I appreciate it.
Well, the sheriff needs some help. I mean, he's got this building that's just almost, I've been there, I mean, if everybody's been there, fine, we all ought to know. The doors are rusted out, the buttons don't work, he's on eBay trying to find switches, and light bulbs are burnt out, pipes don't even exist anymore.
That's not my question.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, the county's been doing all this work. I'm just, I'm just asking, you as a financial body, if this comes up in three years.
If it comes up in three years, what have to do? If we're gonna save money today, fine, but you're gonna, there's a possibility you're gonna have to spend it later, so it's an hour later.
That's my question.
Nobody knows, you can't answer it.
Sanjay, correct me if I'm wrong, would that pod even fit there? Because then do you guys go back and it wasn't quite sized right?
I would recommend you go back to our original schematic design and then add the pod to the.
And that'll fit in that filter?
It still fits, absolutely, yeah. You can still do a hundred bed pod, expandable to two hundred and fifty. So again, not knowing what's gonna happen in the future, there are multiple options that you have to be able to address those needs, and still be efficient from that point.
Well, since, you know, Performance is here and is willing to do a study, would you guys think it would be prudent to take some of their advice and see if they can work with RQAW and see what they can come up with, if they can save the county a little bit of money on this project?
So Mike, I just want to say that we've been kicking this down the road for several years, but we took money out of taxpayers' pocket, I voted for it, to put in public safety to build a jail, and we did that. And the cost keeps escalating because we don't do anything but sit here. You know, we either need to redesign what he's got down there, fix what he's got, or build a damn new jail. That's why we implemented that tax order. It wasn't for all this other stuff we're spending it on. It was for Mike Phelps' jail. And this cost is gonna keep going up as long as we sit up here and just hash it back and forth. Well, we can do this, we can do that. We just need to stand up and say, we're gonna build a jail, or do what the gentleman back there wants.
Well, Randy, off of that, I will move to make a motion that we approved, $98,717.52 appropriation from the commissioners.
Sheriff, are you, are you in favor of that study?
Hold on, Neil, I either have to have a second, or the motion has to die before you can discuss more, since there's been a motion on table.
Apologize.
It's all right.
I'll make a second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Donovan and a second by Mr. Spence to approve the $98,717.52 to draft the new plans with RQAW and to pay Baker and Tilly. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Sheriff, are you, are you familiar with this study, and you're in favor of it?
Of this?
Yes.
This is just a quick review?
No, I'm sorry, the, the HB, or the mechanical electrical plumbing review that we're talking about here. Are you in favor of that?
What do you have? I don't know.
Isn't that what this is? Isn't that what we're talking about, the additional appropriation, correct?
For RQAW to do another systemic design?
Not for the Performance?
No.
That's what you said, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you said.
No, what I asked is, do we think it would be a smart move to wait for a second till our next meeting, for them to complete their study and give their findings and work with RQAW to see if there is a, a better way of doing the MEP work on the jail, if they can do it at a lower cost than RQAW? That was my suggestion, but there's already a motion, a second on the floor, unless anybody would like to withdraw their motion, which I doubt. But that was my suggestion, as we see what Performance has to say about their remedies for the MEP problems at the jail.
Okay, well, I apologize for my confusion. My, my confusion was, I, I thought the motion was to allow the Performance study to go forth.
Oh.
So I apologize to avoid the confusion. Just go with the motion that's on the floor.
Okay. The motion I have is to approve RQAW to do the work specified in the letter we have received, that the commissioners have approved. I have a motion by Mr. Donovan and a second by Mr. Spence. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Two noes. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. That is it.
Wait, I have a correction.
Okay.
Amy, nobody's made a motion to adjourn, Mr. Griffin. Amy pointed out to me that the definition of compensation under the statute I was looking at does not include longevity pay.
Which is salary pay?
Yes. So, what I said about not being able to increase elected officials' compensation is correct. However, the term compensation is defined to not include longevity pay by statute. It was changed in 2019. Therefore, you could elect, and you don't have to decide tonight, I don't, I'm just telling you, that you could go ahead and give elected officials an increasing compensation effective this year, as long as that compensation is longevity pay, which is not compensation. It's, I don't, they can find it however they want to.
Since we are here, do we want to amend that motion to include the elected officials?
Take it up at the next meeting?
Or do you want to add it to the next?
Take it up at the next meeting, that's it.
Are we gonna include elected officials in the longevity pay?
I would say wait till next meeting as well.
Okay.
Would that, make a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, there's a.
Nope.
I, I don't think elected officials, I don't think commissioners.
Oh, jeez.
Well, I would, I would agree to that on the council side, that the elected officials on here wouldn't be, shouldn't be entitled to longevity pay.
Well, that's kinda what we already said.
But we're talking all elected officials, though, like, treasurer, clerk, everybody. On the agenda for next?
I got a tree on my head. Make a motion to adjourn?
Nope. No, I've got one other thing to add, is the fact that we're discussing this jail, one way or another, whatever it is, we can talk about it all day long, but until the commissioners come to us and say, in writing, this is how much money we want, and this is the decisions that they've made, do we make, take? and this is the decisions that they've made, do we make, take those things into consideration? It's not up to the council to decide which plan or anything like that. The ball is in their court.
I could have one more thing. If we had that tax applied, we could darn their faith at jail, as long as we kicked this around.
Yeah. If I could have one more thing, I'd like to say a thank you to all the county employees and everyone that helped on cleanup days. I know we took a lot of stuff. I know they worked extremely hard over the two days.
I want to thank RQAW and Performances for coming up and enlightening us on some of this information. It's very good information.
Thank you all for attending. We greatly appreciate your expertise.
I was going to say, the commission brings something back from your writing, and you go ahead and put what you've been denied.
What's that? I'm sorry, Tim, I couldn't hear you.
What he's been denied, we can put his writing, that's what we want.
Yes, we funded your request for the, for RQAW to, to proceed.
Do you need something written for us money-wise, right?
Money-wise? I mean, we just did, we do.
What are you going to, what are you going to?
You guys had approved it at your meeting, and so we approved the request for the, the amount you requested.
I would, what Bob was saying, all that. You get involved.
No.
I think, I think what Tim is trying to say is what they've done to us a few months ago with the $22 million sending and a number amount, asking the council not to exceed. Is that what you're asking?
You want your guys involved?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
You want that written?
Yeah, just request which one you want to go with, and whatever, you know, and we'll have to decide from there. Is it the 10 million or the 22 million? Whatever you guys decide.
All right. Any further comment? All right, take a motion to adjourn?
My motion's still standing.
All right. Motion, a second?
Second.